Ready to go when you are. Okay, welcome. Welcome to the Izzaquah City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting this day, Tuesday, June 23rd, 2015. And this evening, we have four items on the agenda, along with an opportunity to do some regional reports as well. So first up this evening is a presentation about, from our Human Services Commission. And I believe the presenter is Bill Ramos, the Commission Chair. Bill, welcome to the podium.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. The Human Services Commission just like to bring you up to speed on things that are happening, what we're doing, and how things are going. So we're going to start with a quick review. You know this already because you've already recommended for approval. This last year, 2015 and 16, our grant cycle, there were 42 grants for $291,000 that have gone through there in this year, and we have a two-year grant cycle, so it'll go again next year. So those are onward and going. Other things we're doing are working with others, because we're finding that this is more of a, you know, there's a regional work here. It's not just within the bounds of Izzaquah. So, and some of you are very aware of this, as many commissioners as possible are trying to attend the Eastside Human Services Forums. We've also have, we've had a couple of joint meetings with other city human services commissions. We've been to Bellevue and Redmond, and the commission's getting together so we can just share and see what they're doing, see what we're doing, and just get some networking going on those items. One of the other things we're trying to do is work with the actual grantees more closely. So each commissioner has chosen two to three either grantees that are currently getting funding from us, or another grantee that maybe isn't getting funding from us that they have interest in that maybe should be. So during this year, they're trying to actually make onsite visits, go to them, get a tour, really work with them, see what they're doing, the quality of their work, and so forth. Because when we look at an application, you know, you can see the numbers, you can hear what they're doing, and you know some of them do, you know, we have some familiarity with, some we have less. So we're trying to get that really at a higher level. And with that, we can make better choices. So with that, I'd like to have Mariah Batiste come up here and share with you one of her site visits. So she's going to step up here for a moment.
Hello, thank you for having us. As Bill was talking about, one of the important things that we do as part of the Commission is to get to know the grantees better. And it helps so much just to understand, have a deep understanding of what they do at these agencies, but also daring while we're reviewing applications and that kind of thing, then that commissioner can help field some questions as they come up. So I wanted to tell you just a short story about my trip to the crisis clinic in Seattle. I recently had an opportunity to go and spend almost four hours with Kathleen Southwick, the Executive Director, and be able to really see the crisis clinic in action. That is a group that basically gives information over the telephone, and, but they have many different channels that they deal with within the crisis clinic. And the first part I would like to talk about is being able to listen in on a call through 211. King County 211 basically allows people to call in to get information whether they're in crisis or they're about to be in crisis. And I had a sort of an overview of what they did, but actually sitting and listening on a call was really an amazing experience. So I just wanted to share with you the call in general. So a woman called in, and she was about to become homeless as of that evening. She had four children and absolutely did not know what to do. And the woman who was the operator that was working through 211 was just so amazing. Her ability to calm the client down and to just make her feel comfortable by asking all sorts of kind of open-ended questions and getting her talking. And in the meantime, she's going a million miles an hour on a screen while she's very calmly talking this woman through all of these different avenues that she could possibly go down. So she started with shelters. She went through all of the shelters that were in the area. They had a pretty complex mapping system that they were working off of, and then talked to them about what they could do if they couldn't get into the shelter. So not only did they give one or two shelters, they gave every sort of option for a shelter, then took them through what they could possibly do if they couldn't get in the shelter. Could they stay overnight in their car? That morphed into a conversation about whether they were, the woman on the phone was sort of trying to wrap up the call, and she said, "When was the last time that you and the kids had a meal?" And it ended up that it had been a couple of days since she and the kids had had a meal. And they basically found a place where she could go and have a meal. Then at the end of that conversation, so this whole conversation took about 45 minutes, but the end of that conversation, she said, "I wanted to know if my significant other could come with us and have the meal as well." So they were forwarding them somewhere where it was only women and children. So they changed the plan again and got them, basically the whole family, to go have a meal together that evening at a place where if they couldn't get into the shelter, they could actually stay overnight in the parking lot, which was another option that the woman didn't know about. And at the very end of the conversation, the woman said, "What can we do long-term to help you? Have you thought about what's going to happen in the future, just beyond the short-term crisis that you're in?" And the woman said she had not thought about that. So they vetted her through a program that they had set up that would help her long-term. And as it turned out, she wasn't eligible for it that night, but then they encouraged her to call back the next day. It was such an amazing call to just sit and listen to someone who was in crisis and all of the different avenues that they were able to help with. And it really gave me a clear understanding of what they do at 211, how complicated it is. In the crisis center overall, they're fielding, they have a whole different area where they're fielding all sorts of calls from people who are in an emergency type of crisis, or maybe contemplating suicide, that kind of thing. Within the crisis clinic, there are social workers and all of the volunteers that are working in those areas. And then also got a chance to meet all of the teens through a group called Teen Link, where they're dealing with teens that are in crisis, teens that can call in, talk to somebody on the phone with another teen, or they can IM with a teen, or text with another teen that's being supervised by another social worker. They have recovery lines for people that are dealing with substance abuse or gambling problems, and then other lines where people with mental illness can talk with a peer. So it really is quite an amazing agency, and it was, it really embedded that this is such a great thing for us to do as part of the Commission, is to go and have these meetings so we can, again, field questions and have a better understanding of the agencies that we're funding.
Thank you, Mariah. So it gives you a little feel of those grants that we're doing, and what those dollars are actually doing on the ground, and how they're affecting people's lives. So going on what's happening now in the community needs. First of all, I'd really like to thank you for getting in the budgets this last year, the funding for the new position that Martha has filled. And we're looking for great, great work with her, and having that additional staff is going to be great. So thank you for that. Other things we're working on, we have, some of you are a little bit familiar with the application process and how we take a lot of time to evaluate those. We have a little subcommittee this year and off-year trying to work to improve that process. So again, refine it a little bit, get a little more efficient and a little better, and make sure we have the right information coming in. Because sometimes we'll have grants, and it's just like, well, there's questions we have, but they're not answered in the information provided. So things to make that better. Of course, you know, we've been working on our piece of the comprehensive plan. That's already done. I just want to mention, I'm sure aware, but the Senior Center, just know that there are people coming to us and talking to us about some of the concerns, members of the public. They've showed up at our Commission meeting and talking to us on the street. And I've been working with David, and I know he's working with city staff and moving ahead on that. So just, we know that's going on and getting input from the public on that. The other thing we want to work with is, you've seen our spectrum before, which is across, you know, age group type crisis to prevention. But what that always covers is just our grantees, right? What we're finding out, just like the Senior Center, there's a lot of things that the City of Izzquah is funding through other ways that are human services, definitely supporting human service type activity. So we're going to work to look at all those, to gather all those into the thing, so we can have a better picture, as well as looking with other agencies that are providing stuff that we just aren't aware of, and maybe they're not funded through the city in any way, but they're doing work that we should know what's going on. So we're trying to get that picture larger and larger, so we get a very accurate picture of what's going on there. And then as the future comes on, one of the things we want to look at is questions that we're going to have to work on. And one of those, obviously, shifts in population and minority populations that are moving around and established now where they weren't before. So some of the things we're looking at, racial equality, racial equity, and cultural competency in our grantees and so forth, and looking how that changes things. And then there's some of the things going on that, again, we're getting feedback from members of the community in, that I want to say aren't necessarily true, but what we want to work with, because there's some perspectives that are starting to build. And some of them have already been in the paper on a few things. But some of those perspectives are, the crime rate is going up. The crime rate in parks in Izzquah is going up. There's more drug use. Some people are saying that Izzquah has the best human services around, so it's drawing, it's a magnet to draw people who need those services. And that people receiving those services are the causes of these concerns of crime and drug use and those kinds of things. And then we're afraid that that starts to, people have movements to start criminalizing homelessness. So we're going to work with law enforcement, some other folks, try to get a little more data on that, try to dispel these myths, if there are, and get really what's going on, try to get the community more engaged so that they can see and feel what that is. Because if people can separate something out there, they can blame it, and they can do other things with it, and they can make, you know, thoughts and have perspectives that may not be true. If we get folks engaged a little bit more, understand all our residents, then that would be a little smoother. It ties right into a couple of your new goals, engaging neighborhoods and engage more community. So we're right on the same thought process there of getting folks engaged. I know some of you do already, but if you haven't, I would encourage you to do one real action item that involves you personally, and doing something with some group that's helping some way or other. If you serve a meal, or you volunteer to food bank, or whatever it is, go out, and when you actually work with people, it dispels all that other stuff, and you have a different way of looking at things. So I invite you to do that. If you don't know where to go, contact me. I will take you with me on one of my ventures. So get engaged, as you're saying, and looking forward to doing, and we're looking more for our community as well. And final wrap-up, there's a few things that we may look at again. We tried years ago to work with UW on a community health assessment that didn't quite come to fruition because of timing, and PhD students weren't available, were available, not available. And so we may see if we can get that back together again, or some other sort of needs assessment, to try to build a little more data, a little more real numbers to some of the stuff we're working in, which is now very, very soft data, if you will. So that's my report. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments for Bill?
Or from Mariah?
Appreciate the report. It is encouraging to see the Commission use the time between grant cycles to get out into the community. I'm glad to hear that you recognized how more efforts at engaging more people in the public in these processes is one of our goals. So I'm glad to see that. And the continued use of that continuum, building it out, not only to measure our grantees, but perhaps identify, you know, other areas for opportunities. But I, and I'm pleased also to hear about filling in, putting data points on our graph, so to speak, that represent all the human services provided by the city, not just those that are directly recipients of grants. So I like those developments. I appreciate the report very much. And to all the commissioners who are here, and anybody, next on our agenda, we're going to be getting a presentation about an initiative that is being, coming through King County, titled Best Starts for Kids. And if you're not familiar with it, I would encourage you to stay around. It's going to be right up your alley. So please stick around. And of course, everybody's invited to stick around for that as well.
And could I just ask the commissioners to stand up, so they can make sure all the commissioners stand up?
Who are your commissioners?
So that you sure you know who you're looking at.
All right, thank you.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I kind of gave away what was next on the agenda. So Diane Carlson is here from the King County Executive Office. Diane is the Director of Regional Initiatives, and Diane will be presenting on Best Start for Kids. And I think our council is going to have a little bit of discussion about it afterwards as well.
There we go. Now that I did the hard part, yeah. Getting it up. Thank you, Mr. President and Council. It's such a pleasure to be here. I haven't been here for a long time, so I really appreciate you asking us here to give this presentation, and I personally appreciate being able to come here. I live in Bellevue, so I am an Eastsider. And for many years, I worked in Bellevue before I went to King County. So I want to present today to you the Executive Constantine's proposal for Best Starts for Kids. While the challenges here are great, the goal for the initiative is pretty simple. The goal is to fund strategies and services that prevent negative outcomes for children and families in King County, but primarily focused on children. And that's across King County, and to put every child on a path towards lifelong success, no matter where they start out in life. There's been a lot of research and work that's gone into developing this proposal. Tonight, I'm giving you a condensed version, and just an overview of the types of strategies, the types of outcomes, the need and the science for how this got put together. But there's a whole bunch of information on our website, if you're really interested in the details of some of the science and some of the measurements, and where did these ideas and these concepts come from. So I would encourage you to look to our website if you want that background. We all know this, ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. We use it a lot. It's very true in this case. So we know from decades of research and experience that prevention and early intervention are the most effective and least expensive ways, not only to address some of our most serious lifelong problems, such as obesity, mental illness, substance abuse, and incarceration, but also to help create positive outcomes for children, for their health and well-being, and truly for their later success in life. So some of our more recent science and research is telling us that we can prevent, that we can prevent these problems by investing early in children. And we have a unique research project or program at the University of Washington called iLabS, and they're actually studying how children's brains grow and react to both negative influences and positive influences. And they're mapping how those brains are working and growing. And we know from their work and lots of other work across the country that if you can invest intensively before the age of five, you can prevent a lot of those negative things from happening later. So, but, so that we know what works, but most of our funding is targeted towards the negative outcomes, responding to kind of the crisis points, things like severe mental illness, homelessness, chronic illnesses, and youth who have already dropped out of school, and are involved in our juvenile justice system. And specifically for the county, 75% of our general fund is paying for our law and justice system. So it's the jail, the courts, our police services, and prosecution. This is known as the Heckman Curve, and it's named after the creator, Dr. James Heckman, who's at the University of Chicago. He's actually an economist who's been studying for years, the return on investment for, when you invest in programs, what type of return do you get, societal return? And as you can see, the highest return, the highest rate of return is towards the very early years of someone's life. And then it stops, it starts to drop down as the brain stops growing as much, which happens, you know, about 95% of the brain is developed by the time a child is age five. And then it continues to grow through the schooling years, but you have less opportunity to affect outcomes. So if you were to draw our county investments, it would, our curve would look exactly the opposite. So we start low, and we spend high, where our return is less effective. So taking some of this, these research learnings and the science, that really formed the foundation for putting together the Best Starts for Kids proposal. It has three kind of primary components. That first one is investing early. The greater, we get greater return if we can focus investments on very young children, children under the age of five. Healthy babies do become healthy adults. And then to try to carry those investments forward by making some strategic investments during the school-age years. Investing in kind of key times when the brain is still growing, during adolescence, and catching those developmental stages to prevent crises, such as mental issues, mental health issues, or physical health issues. And then finally, the third component is to invest at the community level, to make sure that we're not forgetting about that really important part of a child's growth and development, which is making sure they're surrounded by, in a safe and healthy place. So what is this? So it's a six-year countywide levy. It has been proposed for the November ballot. That is before the County Council right now, and they're deliberating. I'll get to the schedule for their deliberation a little bit later. But building on those three key themes, and those themes started from, primarily from identifying some outcomes. So the key outcomes for this proposal is to make sure that babies are born healthy and have a strong foundation, make sure that we have, that King County is a place where we have equitable opportunities, no matter where a child lives in the county, so that they can succeed academically and emotionally. And then finally, to have that safe community. So we recognize that, you know, it could be decades before you might to see, you might see some of these outcomes realized. And a very important part of this proposal is ensuring that we have key indicators that are identified, that we're tracking those, we're measuring those, we're reporting on those throughout the six-year life of this levy. Here are the funding details, and I did send a one-page summary that had some of this. Hopefully you got that. If you didn't, I can follow up with that. So a 14-cent levy countywide would generate approximately 60 million a year. So over the six-year life, that's about 392, that's 60 million for the first year, which grows. The distribution is established in the ordinance that was transmitted to the council. So there would be assurance that 50% would be dedicated to that first category of zero to five. 35% would be for that school age, five to 24-years-old, and then 9% for that community, local component. And then, as I mentioned earlier, because we want to make sure that we're measuring progress, and that the strategies that are being invested in are contributing to those indicators and those outcomes, there's a good amount here for data and evaluation, to make sure that we're doing that properly. And then at the bottom, you'll see an initial collection. So it will take a little time, if this is successful, it will take a little time to put together the implementation plan, which means formalizing what the strategies are, developing the request for proposal process, and then seeking those proposals. So for the early collections that might start, that would start at the beginning of the year, the proposal includes setting up a Family and Youth Homeless Prevention Fund, where 16 million would be dedicated towards programs that are preventing people from becoming homeless. So it would be offering assistance to someone who is about, and it was an interesting story that just came before me, somebody who is about to be homeless, or, you know, just needs one month's rent to prevent them from becoming homeless. That's the type of activity that this fund would be used for. On the implementation, because, as I said, there's, the concept here is that there would be both universal programs, so programs that would be available and offered to children and family across the county, and also programs for, targeted to where the needs might be greater. It's really important that the implementation plan is built on a process that talks directly to the communities, so to cities, to community providers, to the organizations that are directly involved in providing services now, that they talk to them and understand what the needs are specifically in your communities. So the implementation plan includes having that process start this summer. They'll be out talking to, kind of, they'll start geographically, and then they'll also expand to working with culturally-based organizations to make sure that we're touching those organizations as well. So they'll start this summer. It will continue through the fall, to really be able to craft the implementation plan in a way that it builds on successes that you have here, or in other parts of the county, and that Best Starts for Kids can help those programs that are successful perhaps go broader or go deeper, and identifies areas where there is need that's not being served. So there will be a lot of work to help put that implementation plan together. Most of the funding is going to go out to the community. So this is not intended to be a county, it will be a county-run initiative and program, but the money will be going out to organizations through competitively bid processes. On the governance side, the ordinance went to the council with establishment of two governing advisory bodies. The first one would be for those two, first two buckets, the children through age five and the five through 24. It was sent without, very, was sent with very few parameters around it about who should be on it, modeled after the Youth Action Plan, and giving the council the opportunity to shape that if they desire. And I believe they probably will. They have heard that there's interest in putting some specificity to who's represented on that advisory body. And the advisory bodies will be involved in helping with the implementation plan. They'll be involved in the reporting process and making recommendations to the council. And then the second advisory bodies for that third local component, because we already have a program called Communities of Opportunity that was started last year with investment from the Seattle Foundation, and they have an existing body, and so we'll from the Seattle Foundation, and they have an existing body, and so we'll build on that one for that third smaller component. The next three slides, I'll just go through pretty quickly, but these are just to give you some examples of the types of strategies, and these are examples. The only one that is really not an example is the first one because the, the proposal does include stabilizing some of the public health services that we have a funding gap for and would be in danger of continuing if we don't provide some additional funding for them. So the maternity support services, the Women Infant Children Program, and the, the family planning services. So that's established in the proposal. Some of the other types of strategies in that early group would be providing services for home-based, additional home-based services for perhaps families or moms who don't need the intensive service of a nurse family partnership. That's a pretty intensive program targeted towards young, new mothers. Also providing training and tools for childcare providers. So 70% of our children are actually cared for in home-based settings, whether it's family or neighbors or friends. And there are good tools geared towards some of the more established childcare centers, but not as many for the home-based centers. And then also providing some strategies or focusing some funding on strategies for early intervention of kids experiencing trauma. So we do have, as you can see on the outcome side, sadly, there are children who get suspended from childcare, and if you can help the childcare provider and the family address that and get them back into childcare, you can prevent things from, negative things from happening down the line. On the school age, some of the strategies. I laughed at this when they, when the experts here were telling us that, yes, the teenage brain does continue to develop. My teenagers are almost out of the teenage stage, but sometimes you, you don't know exactly what's going on. But they are developing particularly their ability to form relationship, good, healthy relationships during that time. So some of the strategies that might be focused on for that would be early intervention for behavioral or mental health issues. And the outcome you would be trying to focus on through that would be reducing hospitalizations. If you can prevent a hospitalization from occurring by catching that early, you not only get, you know, probably a better outcome, but also a less expensive outcome. And then another strategy, it would be helping, or would be expanding our school-based, school-based health centers. What they have found is that if the school-based health center is there in the school, the children and the families will use it, and it's oftentimes a focal point to help get them access to other services, health services. And many children now do use those centers to access mental health services. Finally, the Communities of Opportunity. This is the program that's already been up and running. There have been, there was a competitive process last year and three, five grants, including two planning grants, were, were provided to communities in King County. This would help provide funding for a community that needs some kind of, let's say, a park improvement to help kids get more physical activity or a safe route to school problem that they are seeing. Increasing healthy and affordable food opportunities, so places where there might be food deserts. Those are the types of things. And these are all, these ideas and the strategies for the Communities of Opportunity come from the communities. So it's, it's basically required that, that, you know, that they, the groups get together and propose these ideas based on the needs in their communities. So the timing, this was sent to the county council on April 29th. The council budget committee has had two hearings on it. They have another one tomorrow. The, the requirement for sending it to the ballot is that the council would need to make that decision by July 20th. And so it'll go from the budget committee to the council within the next couple of weeks, most likely. So I know there are probably lots of questions you have. I'd be happy to answer questions. I'll take them down, and if I can't answer them, I'll, I'll make sure that I get the information back to you.
All right. Thanks, Diane. Are there any? Nina, then.
I don't need to be first.
You're always first, Nina. I just look at you first, always.
Turn her down here on the corner. Thank you for your presentation. I have a few questions. Should I just kind of, they're easy. Okay. I wanted to ask about every child and whether there's a based-on-need criteria.
Well, I think that's why, at this point, they're saying that they want to have programs that are both universally accessible, so tools for developmental screening. That's the kind of thing that hopefully is the strategy will be available to children across the county. The school-based health centers, same thing, something that would be available to children no matter what the need is. And then there might be targeted programs that are based on need, so not necessarily the financial need of the individual, but the need in that community.
And then you said you were starting this summer, and so is that pending an approval by the council to start something this summer in advance of the ballot?
Yes. So they're working on the outreach plan now so that it's ready to be started once the council makes their decision.
And then I wanted to follow up on something I didn't quite get, and that was 70% of our infants or children are with a home-based. Do you mean that they're cared for by family members rather than going to daycare? Or what did you mean by that?
They're in centers or, they're in home-based childcare. So that could be at the home with a family member, with a neighbor, in a child, in a home-based childcare center. So those are the kinds of targeted strat, those are the types of strategies that they would be, they would be looking at strategies that reach out to those care providers.
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Tola.
Thanks. I have questions in three areas. The first is around public health. You mentioned a funding gap. Do those funds that are currently experiencing the funding gap, are, do those come from general fund or are they from dedicated funds?
The public health budget is a very complicated, very complicated budget, and they have federal funds, state funds, local funds in there. So the public, the money that supports public health is in its own fund, and some of those monies do come from our general fund. But it's a, it's a really complicated mix of funding.
Okay. So let me ask the question differently.
Okay.
Why is it experiencing a systemic funding gap currently?
Largely because it has this complicated mix of funding sources, and there has been a decrease in both the state and the federal funding allocations.
Okay. And I believe that it's currently targeting, what, 42, 42.8 million over the life of the fund.
Right.
How large is the gap over that same amount of time?
I hesitate to go too, too deep into that because I would want the experts really to tell you that. The gap, there are, there's a gap related to those programs that were on the slide, and then there's a larger gap for the public health budget overall. And so the, the funding was, was, the funding amount was identified in a way that it would be sufficient to sustain those public health, those public health services at their 2014 level.
Okay. Because I thought I had seen somewhere in the documentation that it didn't quite maintain those programs at their 2014.
It would maintain, yes. So the idea is that the Best Starts for Kids money would, would maintain those specific programs at their 2014 level.
I see.
Which, which for some of the programs is an increase over today because they received a reduction since 2014.
It would restore back to 2014.
Bring them back.
For those specific programs, not for public health across the board.
Not for, not for public health across the board. We still have a public health problem for all of public health.
The second question has to do with this Youth and Family Homelessness Prevention Program. As you were describing it, I didn't necessarily hear how it was going to target youth and families specifically.
The criteria that they would use to, to put together how it would be, how it could be used would be limited to youth and family.
So it would not be going to sort of the general pile?
No. No, it would be a separated, a separate program.
Okay. And then the third question arises around this advisory body, to, to use the model of the, oh, forgive me, the...
Youth Action Plan or the...
Thank you, Youth Action Plan. So has, has regional representation been discussed?
Yes, it has been discussed.
Okay. Because I think that, the question around that comes from, I, I think that people recognize that dollars in don't have to go directly back out to the exact communities that they come from. And I think that folks in Issaquah understand that there's a lot of parts of the county that, that have a lot more specific need than we do. But there is also need out here, right? There is, the school that my kids went to, Issaquah Valley Elementary, 30% of the kids are on free and reduced lunch. And so, and I realize that number, there are, there are schools that would love to only have it be 30%, but it is real, and we're seeing an increase in the human service needs for these families over time. And so I think that having people, it will be important when, if, if this levy goes forward, it will be important for folks in East King County to understand that there will be people at the table who will be talking about the needs of East King County. Not necessarily that they're going to get a specific number of dollars or anything like that, but that the process will, that folks will understand what the needs are out here and that they'll be at the table when prioritization is being made.
We have heard that from several communities. I think it is important that we have geographic representation, and I think that will be welcomed.
Thank you. That, that's all the questions I have.
Stacy?
Thank you. Thank you also for the presentation. I have a couple of funding questions. The 392.3 million, is that the right number over the life of the levy? Does that include the 3% annual increase and also new construction in that figure?
I'll check on that. I believe it does, but let me, let me bookmark it and I'll get back to you to make sure.
Okay. Thank you. And can you explain a little bit how the county arrived at this amount for the, this specific total levy amount? And the reason I'm asking is because I see that there's a lot of money that's allotted to studies and implementation and some decision-making yet to be done. And so it seems, it appears to me, so tell me that I'm wrong, that maybe the, is the cart before the horse a little bit, and we've coming up with a dollar amount, but we don't know how necessarily that's going to be spent and then how, but it seems like you would need to know what you need to do to figure out how much money that you need so that you know how much you need to raise.
Yeah. Well, as you probably experienced when you're putting together these things like this, the need is usually this big. So it's much larger than what you could afford to pay for. So, so it really wasn't based on coming up with a comprehensive, like how much could we or should we spend? It was based on how much do we think we can't, you know, how much do we think could make a difference? So can we get it big enough to make a difference in moving some of these outcome measures? And, and, you know, what, what, what would be a good level to start with to, to be able to get, then build public support for it in the future? So it needed to be large enough that we could make a difference, knowing that some of these outcomes are going to take a long time to achieve. And we also have to keep, you know, be considerate of everything else that's going on with our funding situation within the county at the local level. So, so it really wasn't built on, we want to spend this much on this program and this much on this program, because it's designed to be somewhat flexible to try to get people to, in the communities, to tell us what are the most important needs. So we didn't want to build it up on a program-by-program basis.
Is there some, so when you say there's this much need and we figured we could make a dent in it, is there some idea of what, what that total need is and how much of a dent we're making?
Yeah. I think that the total need is probably very, very large. So I'll, I'll see if they came up with anything. I really don't think that they built it up that way. I think they were looking at, again, how can we, how can we put something together that will, will have an impact and that we can get support for without being too large?
Okay. And then Tola, kind of building off Tola's question about the, the public health, I think it's the maternal-child programs. So this is supposed to help stabilize that funding through this, at 2014 level through 2021? Is that right?
Six years, yes.
So then, so was there a plan for after that? Because if it's to stabilize that fund and we, then if we don't have a renewed levy, then we have to figure out something else.
Right. And there will be, as I was saying, there will be continued work over the next couple of years to try to look for a way to stabilize the entire public health program, including a possibility for a backup for this. We don't have a plan right now if this doesn't, isn't approved. So that would have to be considered as well into, in, in the big mix of the public health budget problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Josh?
Thanks. I'm a little raspy, so I'll do my best. So I want to piggyback on one of Stacy's questions about the funding through the levy because I guess my question, depends on your answer, is, is whether or not the amount that's expected to be raised by the levy assumes the current rate of growth or housing prices in the county. Because what I would hate to see happen in this circumstance is that we slide back, where property values decline, and then the county sets up all these great programs, and then there's not enough there, you end up with a funding gap.
Right.
Essentially. And so I brought this up with our finance director for our city as well, that if we're looking at a six-year time period starting now, there is very likely to be within the next six years a market correction, not of the significant magnitude as, say, '07, '08, but property values are not going to continue at the rate of growth for the next six years that they are currently. We're already pre-bubble pricing. So does that build in any kind of negative or flat growth rate within that six years?
I, I am pretty certain that it built in a growth rate. The thing about this program is that, again, the county wouldn't be establishing a program. We would be competitively bidding these, and it's, it's also subject to our biennial budget process. So, you know, we'll know coming into the next year how we're doing on that collection rate, and that can help determine how much is available to go out. So I don't think we'd be in a situation where we were committing more than what was available.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you. Tola, go ahead.
I, I have a, I have a process question.
Go ahead.
So as, as Diane mentioned, they have a committee hearing tomorrow, and so as the Issaquah rep to the SCA pick, the pick would very much like to get a sense from this body, any feedback or further questions that they would transmit on as part of their overall. This is sort of a, it's an out-of-sequence. This isn't how they normally like to do things, but they want to make sure that they give municipal, municipal feedback into the process. So I would like to have a point where we discuss this, and I don't know if that's now or if that's at the, at the end of the evening. I just ask you how you...
It's going to be now, now, definitely, and, and we'll take a little bit more time. And I just wanted to make a comment and also ask a question. So the comment is, and I think you heard it earlier, from our Human Services Commission Chair spoke about how we here in the city do look at how we use our general funds across a continuum from both preventative care through, through kind of maintenance and sustained mode. but also to address, uh, issues that are in crisis. So, um, recognizing that, um, more resources are nee, are needed at the preventative end, I, I'm grateful for that insight. I see a program here, um, I, I think there was a good question, Josh's question and your answer is, I think it's very critical. It's not about inventing new programs, identifying what programs exist and how can they be expanded or stabilized, uh, that are community-based, already designed, uh, to address the needs within the community. Um, I think, uh, Tola's point about, um, kind of the geographic, uh, question, that's, um, I'm sure the county hears that quite a bit. I hear it on the, uh, when it comes to housing, you know? And here in the east, uh, north and East King County, you know, we look for dollars to create more, uh, and, and retain affordable housing. And, you know, the availability of affordable housing is actually quite large in the, comparatively, in South County. So their needs are a little bit different, and we have to make, recognize those differences. Yet the needs still exist in, just in different forms in different parts of the county. So I appreciate that, the awareness of that. My question is, you mentioned getting back to 2014 levels. Now, there are many programs who, I think we even had, uh, a legislative agenda item in one of the bodies I'm involved with, we asked, we hope we could get back to 2011, uh, because fourteen is actually quite behind where they were in 2011. Could you, is there, you know, what is, so you, you talked about federal funds, state funds, and other sources, that have felt, that fund, uh, Department of Health and Community Services. And, um, and as a lot of people in the audience know, that, uh, service providers, human service providers, that depended on these various public funding sources, have all had to make tremendous adjustments over the years. And so it sounds like now we're kind of seeing this even, you know, at the county level, uh, at least with this department. So is, is two fourteen, is 2014, uh, you know, was that, was that the high watermark? Or was it like back in 2011 where a lot of other programs were, or earlier?
I'm, I'm not going to say it was the high watermark, and, and, and we were, you know, I was just speaking specifically to those particular public health programs. So, um, we took a lot of cuts in lots of programs like you did at, at the city, um, including our, um, our human services types programs. But for public health, 2014 or 2015 was when they saw, when we had to make reductions in staff. And so that's why the goal here was to get it back up to a point where we could restore those staff.
So did that include then some of the community health centers themselves? Because I seem to recall there were some closing or reductions prior to last...
We did have some consolidations, um, but that was specifically the, the time when we were looking at having to close, um, I think it was three clinics. That was, uh, 2014.
Okay, so does this envision, is stabilizing reopening those, or...
Um, no, because the ones that were consolidated, they were, uh, we joined in partnership with, um, other nonprofit or profit providers. So those are in, we just moved essentially those programs. So it's, it's not like we, I think, would intend to reopen those. We had, we did stabilize through the help of some cities, helping to fund, uh, those clinics that were threatened to close. And so this would just help maintain those clinics and bring the staffing level back to 2014 levels.
All right, thank you. The last thing I would ask is, I would ask the, um, uh, our commission is very aware of service providers in the early development and prevention, uh, fields. And I, I would encourage us to, um, actually share, just share with Diane and the county, you know, who is providing services to, you know, our residents and our, what has been our level of support. I think just, it just increases the awareness of what our own community has already identified, uh, what the priorities are, both in prevention and also, um, early childhood development areas. And so I would just, let's share that, because these are the agencies already, you know, providing a valuable assistance to our community members.
Thank you, that would be very helpful.
Okay, so does anybody else have any questions for Diane? Okay, Tola, um, back to you.
Sure, so I had forwarded, um, onto the rest of the council, uh, the minutes from the last pick meeting that were extensive. You now know why I had a hard time at the last council meeting encapsulating that into a reasonable length of time. There were many questions asked. I narrowed it down to what I considered a, a few specific, just for my own personal interest, and I've shared some of, um, King County's response on those issues. So I guess, you know, I, I have, I have things that, that I'm probably still interested in communicating back, but I, I would love to hear what, uh, the rest of the council feels they heard either tonight or, or through written materials earlier, that either has, is a concern or something that you're like, wow, we really need to make sure X, Y, Z.
Okay, open the floor to comments.
I'll go first. So as, um, we all know here on the council, we're talking to each other, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we know on the council, we're, um, focused particularly on our goal-setting sessions on, um, what success looks like and, um, what we're trying to achieve. Um, and, and so that we are specific about the goals that we set for ourselves and that we have, um, steps or benchmarks, um, whatever you may call them, so that we know when we've, when we have achieved success. And, um, I, um, I read the, um, the discussion, all the materials that were provided to, um, the Public Issues Committee for May, when this was first brought forward. And I've read the, um, I read the, the proposed ordinance. And, um, I have, um, concerns about, um, similar concerns, uh, that were already raised at the, at the pick. And so I'm going to, um, and then I read the notes, that, you know, all the comments that were made by the members of pick. And so I'm going to read off the ones that, um, concern me, so that you can take note of that. And, um, and they are really about specificity and, um, outlining the goals. So... So I'll just read the ones that stood out to me that, um, that were concerning. There's a critical need to strengthen the governance portion of the levy, um, of the ordinance, that currently identifies two advisory boards. Ordinance does not explain the membership of those advisory committees. Does not give, um, a meaningful role to the cities as of yet. Uh, does not indicate if the committees will have approval authority. I can give you a copy of what I've outlined, too. And each geographic area of King County should have a seat on those advisory, um, committees. Uh, levy does not provide enough specificity. Um, it should identify specific goals and outcomes, which will give the public a better understanding, leading to, which would lead to increased support. Um, and then that further definition of success will help to ensure that community partners will have the record needed to implement the levy. I agree that accountability is critical, that was mentioned by one of the pick members, and that annual reports should be, um, made available, so that the, um, to know how the levy proceeds are being spent by geographic area, by age group, by program, et cetera. Um, and then one esteemed member, Tola Martz, had this comment, which I agree with. The levy will be much more successful with the electorate if it is extremely clear and provides specificity. And I know that's a little repetitive, but I wanted to say that. Um, I'd like some clarification at some point regarding, um, how much money is dedicated to be spent on studies. Someone noted twenty-four million dollars. I don't know if that's, seems like a lot, but, I don't know. I think those are the comments I have, and I don't want the, my comments, um, concerns to be construed as, um, not understanding or not believing that we have a need. Because I, I, you know, I do agree that we have a need. I'm not exactly sure, um, because it's not my area of expertise, I'm not exactly sure what you do to achieve the goals that we have, because they're, well, Diane mentioned that it's, the goals are very simple. Goals being to fund strategies that prevent negative outcomes for children and families, um, and to put youth on a path to lifelong success. It, it may sound very simple, but it's not simple at all. And so I'm not exactly sure how we, how we get there. So I think finding, you know, more speci, specificity, um, is really needed, so we know, what we're doing will actually get us as far as we want to go.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments I'd like to share with, with Tola? Questions that you have for us, Tola, any other specifics?
So, well, I'll, I'll share some thoughts that I, that I still have, that I think are important, potentially to communicate back, and you guys tell me if, if you think I'm wrong in this. I think on this issue of public health dollars, I think it's really important, um, uh, to stress that these are to maintain certain critical programs. I think that, uh, there is oftentimes, uh, a skepticism in, in the community that, uh, for new taxation, oh, this is just some new big government thing, right? This is not some new big government thing. And I have found that the messaging thus far around the public health dollars has been a little bit murky about this. And I'm sure there are people, I'm sure there are stakeholders who don't want to have to talk about the fact that there's a, you know, a funding, um, gap. But I think that in, in communicating the value of this, um, to potential voters on this issue, I think it's going to be really important, um, uh, to make that clear. And that for certain specific programs, this should hold to this 2014 dollars. And I'll, I'll get to your comment about that in just a second. Um, the regional representation piece is probably the thing that I feel the most strongly about. I spoke before King County Council on Prop One last year and said that, um, in, in a similar spirit, that, you know, East King County is, the folks here are, we are very, very lucky, and we understand that, you know, w- we are part of a larger community and, and, you know, people, that we all need to give and, and address problems where they occur. But Prop One, they did not communicate strongly enough, in my, my personal opinion, and again, I don't mean to step on any stake, stakeholders' toes. It was not clearly enough articulated what East King County would get out of Prop One. And, and we saw almost historically low voter support for Prop One. And, um, this is a levy, not a bond, and so it's a different, at a different point. But I think similarly, this regional representation is really critical, so that I can look people in the eye in the, if they ask me, you know, is this going to have benefits in East King County? So I, so that I'm able to say, yes, it will. And then, uh, I think that there is a question, I didn't really bring it up in, in my, um, questions for Diane, but, um, there are communities that are going over the five ninety cap. And five dollars and ninety cents per thousand assessed value, only a couple. And it's, it's not exactly clear how close we are to that. But, um, there are a number of levies, levies that are around, out there right now, um, at, at the county level and, and at other levels. And, you know, municipalities that get to that five ninety will have to prorate, um, some of the, um, some of the, some of the levies that are out there, uh, which would include, um, uh, libraries, EMS, King County Flood Zone. And so I think that there may need to be some conversation about, you know, this, this issue of funding, for ki, you know, early, um, early funding to help get better outcomes for kids and families. There may need to be a conversation about, look, this is, this is more important. We understand that there's a finite amount of, of levy capability in these sorts of levies, and that, I think that will make voters feel better about the situation, right? This isn't, there's an, there is not an infinite grab out there. But to, to recognize that there are municipalities, this will affect their ability to contribute to, for libraries, EMS, and, uh, uh, King County Flood Zone. And then the final thing is, I think, I totally agree, your question about 2011 versus 2014 funding, this is sort of in the, oh, and by the way, since we're talking, um, it's, it's extraordinary to me. We live in one of the most affluent counties in the United States, one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States, the best-educated county in the United States, um, the most literate county in the United States. And to have there be persistent funding gaps across the board in, in human services and other areas, I don't get. I don't understand, and it's not for this, it's not for this levy to solve that problem. But it's extraordinary to me that we as a, as a community, I mean, if we can't fund the things that need to happen, how can anybody anywhere? So I, I, I would say I would include this issue of what do we do at the end of the levy is really, really important. And that as they start to think about, uh, you know, that's got to be part of the conversation. Maybe it's not anything that's, you obviously don't write it into the ordinance, but it's got to be a conversation that starts occurring quickly. So that's the, that's sort of the points that I had coming out of this.
All right, thank you. Totally appreciate that, and I, I would feel real comfortable if you continue to represent those thoughts, um, going forward.
Thanks.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody. That was, um, a real action-packed, information-filled twenty minutes.
And thank you for allowing that to go longer than twenty minutes.
Yeah, yeah, no worries. So next, uh, is, upon the agenda is, we're going to have a conversation, we're going to get an update from Dana. Hello, uh, Dana's from our, um, is an environmental science associate. What, are you with Public Works Engineering? Yes, and this is NPDES, a favorite subject of us all, please. Looking forward to the update.
Well, I, I, I work with Public Works Engineering, and, um, I oversee, um, a lot of our environmental programs, as well as our stormwater NPDES program. Um, I'm going to chat about both of those today. But to start, just because we're probably all on a different page with NPDES and stormwater, um, I'm going to take about four minutes to show a video, should it pop up. And it was put on by PBS and, um, with coordination from the Washington State Stormwater Center, who is quite a leader in, um, uh, stormwater and the NPDES permit. So I'm going to see if that works right now. And, um, and again, I'm going to stop at around four minutes, just so we have time for the rest of the discussion. I don't know if the volume's going to work.
All right.
Laura James has been diving in Puget Sound for more than twenty years.
Just the feeling of being weightless. It's just like flying. The animals are fantastic and, and so different than anything you'll ever see up here on the surface. Kind of like going into Wonderland. I don't think that people realize what a gem we have. It's the Emerald Sea. It's got so much life. The cold water, uh, has more nutrients, can hold more oxygen, hold more nutrients than warm water. So you get tremendous invertebrate marine life. You get octopus, bullfils, and all sorts of sea slugs, just every color of the rainbow. The wild and crazy animals you see underwater, they're kind of like Alice in Wonderland to me a little bit. You go beneath the sea and it's, you're in this different world, and it's mesmerizing and brilliant.
In addition to the abundant life, James also witnesses a deadly form of pollution.
We'd swim along and we'd see this decaying swath, black and dead leaves and like garbage, bubblegum wrappers and the straws, like stir straws from coffee and coffee, coffee cup lids, and very random things, and it, it didn't, I didn't understand what I was seeing.
One day she came across something in the water that has haunted her ever since.
We were coming up the slope and I saw what looked like, um, a piling, and it was this big black column. And, and as we got closer, I realized that it was actually a storm outfall. And it was so full of, um, road brim and who knows what, that it, it was just black. And it was just billowing and billowing, and it was, it just doesn't stop. When I saw that stuff flowing into Puget Sound, I was just like, what is in this? And of course, went home and I started looking it up on the internet. I'm like, what's in stormwater? And I'm like, I don't want that there.
Stormwater is a toxic cocktail of sediment, grease, tire wear, and any litter small enough to slip into storm drains. And that's just what you can see. There's much more we can't see. Microscopic particles of heavy metals like copper and zinc are commonly found in urban highway runoff. There's also oil and petroleum-based hydrocarbons. Contrary to what a lot of people think, runoff is Puget Sound's biggest source of pollution.
Approximately fifty percent of the region believe that stormwater is treated, is captured, and then conveyed for treatment to a treatment plant of some type, um, when in fact, this doesn't take place. Almost all of this water goes off totally untreated.
Throughout the United States, so much land has been paved over that the total amount of impervious surfaces would cover an area the size of Ohio. Every time water washes over these hard surfaces, pollutants pour into the nearest waterway.
All these impervious surfaces means that water...
All these impervious surfaces means that water can't get through them. Whereas if it rains in the forest, the water hits the ground and then very slowly seeps into the soil. And the soil acts like a sponge. It slows down the water, it cleans the water, and it filters it. And obviously, an impervious surface like pavement just doesn't do that at all.
So, should you, if you haven't seen that video already, and you want to see more, it's on the Stormwater website. And I just think it was a, it's a good introduction to what I'm going to chat about today and, and what programs we have here in Public Works Engineering, as well as the city's stormwater NPDS permit. And what I like about that video as an introduction is, we don't see stormwater, we really don't see the, sometimes the effects of it, we don't see it on an everyday basis. Driving over here, it took me 40 minutes from City Hall Northwest. I saw the effects of the traffic today, you know. But for stormwater and water quality, we don't, unless we're measuring it, and we do. And we have programs in place that do a lot of reporting. And I wanted to take the opportunity today to share what we've been active in doing in Public Works Engineering, and then as a city as a whole. So, at least in Public Works Engineering, we have our stormwater and sewer programs. And these are all of our environmental programs. We've got fat soil and grease, and septic, and then a lot of inspection programs, working with the business community. And, and we also kind of separate here, we have our Ambient Stream Monitoring Program, which has been going since 1999 and has been looking at trends over time. Because we sample nine creeks eight times a year, and we look at the water quality and how that's changing. We also have the Wetland Mitigation and Maintenance Program. So when a habitat restoration project is built, or a CIP project is built, there's a maintenance obligation that actually goes on after that project is built. For five years and sometimes 10, depending on the agency and where that's taking place. But what I wanted to share is a lot of these programs that we have, and I'm going to talk about each of them a bit, but they all really fold into our stormwater NPDS permit. Our NPDS permit is, is, comes down from the federal government as part of the Clean Water Act. And the EPA has delegated authority to the Department of Ecology. And our jurisdiction, as well as 82 others, are considered Phase II municipal permit holders, which basically allows us, should we, since we have this permit, to, our municipal system discharges to surface and groundwaterers of the state. And because there are pollutants associated with that, the permit outlines five specific areas of which we are required to meet. And so those are the five listed there, and I'm going to talk about each one. Public education is a, is a huge effort here in the city of Issaquah with multiple different departments. We join as much as possible with other jurisdictions because education is power and providing multi-jurisdictional funds with the effort of a Puget Sound Starts Here campaign. The city has been working with that. We've done bus advertising, just starting at the end of May, at our cinema up in the Highlands. We have a video with the Puget Sound Starts Here video. And then it kind of ties back to Issaquah at the end. And we've done that for the past couple of years and are doing it again this year. Our Open Space Steward does a lot of work on the riparian areas, as well as not just removing and planting plants, but also removing homeless encampments. And actually, like 6,000 pounds of material was removed, and most of that is on stream corridors. So a lot of work, not just with publication, public education, but involvement in activities. All of this, we report in our annual report every year. But we have partnerships with education offices, sustainability with the school district, and their film series is very popular. Another part of public education in Public Works Engineering, we work a lot with the business community. And that's either through our Wellhead Protection Program, I like to call it, or it's known as our Critical Aqua for Recharge Area Program. We have our Source Control Business Inspection Program, that's funded through the Department of Ecology. And then our Fat Soil and Grease type program. A lot of this is working directly with the business community on making sure that their practices are most beneficial in the protection of stormwater, hazardous material storage and such. So, for example, in 2014, we did 132 visits and 58 CARA inspections. We also have the Fat Soil and Grease Program. And although this is a sewer-related program, Fat Soil and Grease is quite a stormwater program too. So all these, even though they might be in different categories of environmental programs, they have a real direct relationship to stormwater. And grease, for example, is probably one of the most significant on a business perspective that we see most commonly in the city. And it is a stormwater-related issue. Also part of the permit, we have private stormwater inspections. We do these annually for all new development after 2012. But we also look at all of our old existing facilities on a two- to three-year basis. We did about 119 in 2014. And the importance with this is, right to maintain maintains the function of it. So we're looking back at our existing facilities to make sure that they are performing and maintain the way that they were designed. This program, I want to just note that it is part of the NPDS permit, and it's one of those programs that grow exponentially every year. So with every development permit that comes in, it has a stormwater facility on site. So then that is on annual maintenance cycle.
Can I ask you a question about?
Sure.
As new facilities go in, do we have, is, so stormwater's not treated, but it's often, they often put catch basins in before the water's actually discharged, right? Is all of our water catch basined, or is all new stormwater projects that go in use catch basins?
So it's all new stormwater. Any new development that comes in that is over 5,000 square feet in size is required to have water quality treatment. And the NPDS permit and our stormwater design manuals specifies what kind of treatment that shall be. And I'll probably talk more about that. Any site over 2,000 square feet needs to have flow control. So there's flow control and then water quality. So new development, if it hits that trigger, it's going to have treatment. So it might have a wet pond, it might have a rain garden, infiltration, and at least that allows the stormwater to kind of clean itself up before it discharges into one of our surface waters.
I just think it's important to understand that. People think it just goes straight out of pipe. And that, that the dive thing, I've actually dived some of the outlets off of the catch basins in Seattle because they're superb dive sites. And that, that thing that she described is only when you have a really, really bad rain and the catch basins overflow, right? So there are, I just want to make sure we understand that, you know, as things move forward, we have standards that, it doesn't treat the way you treat potable water.
Right.
But it, it doesn't just go in a straight pipe out into Lake Spanish, right?
It, well...
It goes to, it goes to a catch basin or some other facility, right?
Our new development does. Our existing development is not treated and does enter a pipe and go straight into the creek.
Without catch basins?
Well, the storm, the catch basins aren't treatment.
I get that.
It's, yeah, it'll basically, so our streets don't flood, it will collect the water, hold it for a little bit, and then discharge it out. There's no treatment.
I get that.
Yeah, yeah. But yes, you should not see that unless it's raining hard, because that's what happens. But we do see that at times. And I'll talk about that in a minute when we get to illicit discharges. But onsite septic, real quick, we do do that. That's again, a sewer program. And for those residents that have homes that front city sewer, they, every three years, submit to the city an inspection from King County Public Health that says either their sewer is in, sewer onsite septic is in failure or not. And it allows us to be able to make sure that if it's failing, that it gets tied into sewer, since it's available. But again, as we know, if it fails, it's, it's a water quality issue as well. And in 2014, four septics were removed as part of this program and tied to sewer, or one of them was a home was demoed. So it is no longer onsite septic. So illicit discharges, that also means non-stormwater discharge. So if a business or an activity from the community is flushing something that's not stormwater into the storm drain, that's a water quality issue. So Public Works Operations and Public Works Engineering, we work very closely in responding to citizen action requests, complaints. As part of those business inspections, we really look at storm drains and make sure that there's no pollution in the system. We responded to 45 last year. 31 were actually discharges. Sometimes you get a call about something and it's, it hasn't made it to a drain yet. What I wanted to share about this, you know, this can happen, private property, public property. And the stormwater NPDS permit really focuses on training city staff to make sure that we have protocols in place and how we respond to issues should they occur on private or public property. There was one in the news a couple weeks ago, our de-icer was vandalized, and the molasses-type material entered two storm drains in Tibbetts Creek. Our protocols that were in place were by the book, ecology was notified, reporting was in place, all the steps that were taken, and that's because the training and the SOPs and such that are in place. But the same thing can happen on private property. And we get a call, and this is concrete washwater, that's not even a outdoor activity, it's an inside activity. Construction was going on, and the contractor had just basically thrown out all the washwater and hosed it out the back door. But that not only hit their private system, it hit our public system. And so when that happens, there's a lot of compliance pieces in the cleanup effort. And then a lot of technical assistance that occurs afterwards with businesses and/or compliance should need be. But it just works, we work really closely together, is what I wanted to say, and have fine-tuned this, since we get quite a few now a year. Mostly, I think, because people are becoming more educated on what to look for. One of those things we don't see a lot or hear about is the work that goes into creating these lean reporting systems. And we've used GIS a lot lately. I love GIS. And we have spent a year trying to develop this, where we can just go out in the field and click a button and note where there's pollution and where there's not, and then we can push a button and report to Ecology that we inspected 2,000 of our 7,000 catch basins. That's huge effort. And we can show it now too. So for example, orange is where there were issues, and green is where it's not. And this is both our private and our public system. So it's just kind of a nice geographic sense. And we're required under the permit to look at 40% of our stormwater system, our public stormwater system by 2017. And we're already at 30%, which is a great workload effort. Kind of talking to the controlling runoff and new development, this is a big part of our stormwater permit. This, the NPDS permit had started in 2007, it's a five-year permit. Our new permit, which started in August of 2013, has increased some ways that we're going to look at stormwater now in the future. Part of it is updating our code. So we will be updating our code again this year and next year with something for you all to see next year. And that will be, it has to be equivalent to what Ecology's manual says. We adopt the King County's manual, so those two have to match. Low-impact development or green infrastructure, people like to use a lot of different terms, that is required, we're feasible now. So if a development were to come in, it's, it's looking at what your first choice is or, or something that's going to get the water in the ground, because that has the best ability to treat. So you're looking at bio-retention, otherwise known as rain gardens, that are engineered, pervious pavement, infiltration and dispersion, instead of the standard conventional water quality treatment. The DSD and Public Works Engineering are reviewing codes and ways to integrate low-impact development. We have a lot there now with tree retention. Yes?
Can I ask, what's the cost differential between pervious and impervious pavement?
You know, that is changing every day. It used to be that pervious pavement was more expensive. It's now being shown that it is not. Pervious concrete is a little more expensive than the standard. The maintenance is different, and you probably have more expense with the maintenance end of it. But they're finding that they're matching up very comparable.
Okay.
And technology, a lot of it is that technology is continuing to change as the demand is increasing, and there's more vendors.
That's good news, thanks.
Yeah. So again, one of the work efforts I hope that you will be hearing more about is how low-impact development will be reviewed and integrated where it's feasible within our land use codes, our stormwater code. It's a process as required as part of this permit. And we'll be open for public comment and input later in 2016.
Oh, a question about the slide, it just went, you said it a minute ago, but it went past me too quickly.
Yes.
You were talking about these being conditions of the new permit.
Yeah.
Then you said something about the King County standards. Are these part of the King County, and what's that called again?
Okay, so the NPDS permit, it's kind of like the umbrella. In that permit, it says, "You shall adopt the Ecology Stormwater Manual or its equivalent." So King County, the city now currently designs and has adopted the King County Stormwater Design Manual. It is equivalent at this point in time to the Ecology Manual. But Ecology has a new manual, and King County is now revising their stormwater design manual, of which the city can choose to adopt. But it hasn't been given its blessing by Ecology yet. So we don't know what's in there 100%. So we kind of say we're going to go from what Ecology says and move our way down. And again, because maintenance standards are different on a lot of these low-impact development techniques, a lot of our operations SOPs and maintenance activities have to be revised. So I just wanted to let you know that's coming. But in final remarks, we have a lot of stream and habitat restoration projects going on. We have Confluence Park right now, which is fabulous, great habitat for salmon. We want to keep the water that way too. Good stormwater, good water quality, it's a beautiful mix. And then the low-impact development features go along well with the urban environment as well, to just create an area of public health, safety and environment. So I hope that that gives you a little bit of flavor about some of the programs that we have going on in Public Works Engineering, and then as a city as a whole, as it relates to the NPDS permit. So any questions?
Yeah, I do. I remember when it was adopted, we did pursue, I think, an exception for developments of one acre or less, if I remember that. Am I remembering that correctly?
So are the threshold in the newer permit that was released in August 2013, the threshold for one acre goes away?
Right.
Yeah.
And so what, what's the real impact of that to, is it, is it, does the type of development matter? Is it whether it's commercial or housing? Is it whether it's commercial or housing? And what is it actually, what is, what does it mean to development that's, that was now subject to these requirements that wasn't before?
Right, so it's more subject to the municipality than it is to the development. So, so for example, right now, if a site comes in, the privates, for example, if they put a stormwater facility on their site, if it's greater than an acre right now, that has an annual inspection program when that facility is done. If it's less than an acre, it doesn't go into this annual inspection program. Goes into a two to three-year cycle, that's one example. The treatment, there's a difference in so-called development. There is, there's a slight difference with under an acre and over an acre. And when you trigger impervious surface, that 5,000 square feet of new and replaced. So right now, and this gets confusing, but the, without showing a spreadsheet. But right now, if you're over an, I'm going to try to figure out how to describe this. You have to, your amount of 5,000 square feet, it goes with new and plus replaced for treatment. Am I describing this right? And then I might have to get back to you with a spreadsheet. But there is, there is a scenario of, otherwise you just like, look at new of 5,000 square feet or new plus replaced. If you have to do new plus replaced because you're over an acre, that's a lot. That adds up a lot quicker than just your new. So if you're doing a road project and you have to quantify your new plus replaced because you're over an acre, that's a lot, so.
I, I.
That's the only way.
My question is, what I'm trying to get at is, so, so that threshold is gone?
Yes.
And so any size now?
In 2017.
Okay, sorry, and I just, just trying to better quantify what those impacts are to either us and/or the landowner.
It's more to the city.
Maybe Sheldon's going to offer something?
Yeah, you want to help with that piece?
Thank you Dana. The impact to the properties that were previously exempted from the MPDS regulations, one acre or less, is that they will now have to retrofit for existing impervious surfaces plus do their treatment and controls for any additional. So it's not, the properties under MPDS that are less than an acre in size today, they don't have to retrofit when they redevelop. They only deal with their new impervious. So come 2017, they're going to not only have to do their new impervious stormwater treatment and the like, but they'll have to retrofit their existing. That's a substantial impact financially to the properties as they redevelop. Physically, it's doable. There's lots of technologies, as Dana was talking about earlier, that enable it to occur. So it's a cost issue. And then there's an additional cost issue to the city because each one of those facilities now is going to have to be inspected annually and we're going to monitor them and things like that. So the workloads increase on the city side and operational side, while the capital investment on the private sector also increase. That's the impact of taking it from the one-acre exemption and no longer having that exemption in place.
Okay, thank you.
So any other questions?
Nina?
I have questions.
Nina, it's Nina, did you say Nina?
No, I said Jean.
Good. Hi, thanks. I, well, I have kind of questions, mostly comments too, in that, let me ask this question first. When we talked about the King County Stormwater Design Manual, I'm remembering back to negotiating development agreements. And one thing that we learned was, when I was with the Urban Village Development Commission, was to identify an outside source such as King County Stormwater Manual as the standard. And so with our development agreements, is it true that we have that? And so that they are evolving along with this code? Because there are some things in a development agreement that draw a line in the sand, correct? And that, and it was with stormwater that we wanted to be able to evolve as the, it looks like Sheldon's dying to answer this question.
Yeah, I can answer that one too, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
The more recent development agreements that the city has done does provide for the evolution of the stormwater code to occur and the developer to be responsible to meet the code at the time in which they're doing their redevelopment. Some of the older ones though actually set a line and said this is the standard for the entire duration of the development agreement.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, that's what I remembered. And the, Dana, did you say that the old stormwater facilities have discharge that goes directly into Lakes of Mamish? And that doesn't necessarily change unless there's redevelopment of 5,000 square feet of pervious, impervious surface?
That's correct.
And it triggers an upgrade?
That's correct.
I understand that. And can I share a comment with the council?
Okay.
I'm really interested and keenly, listening to this story, I wish I knew even more about it. But as we redevelop in a very dense and, and we can go 100% impervious, we are putting a burden on these systems that they wouldn't have before. I'm really glad to see the LID requirements and I hope that they have enough teeth to actually happen because right now we have a, we're building a dependency on the pipes that would, if it's a big enough service area, be treated before it goes into our waterways. But still, it's a huge responsibility and something that I've been concerned about. So I'm glad to see these things evolving and creating more protections for our waterways. I think it's an ongoing, ongoing thing.
Thank you. Dana, thank you so much.
Okay, great, thank you for your time.
Okay. Last on the agenda, Sheldon, are you going to be giving us an update on the massive causeway across the river?
Actually, thank you Paul. Actually, I'm not going to be the one giving the update. The city's consultant, Kay Adams, who's the, with KBA, the construction management firm that's been helping us oversee the design activities we'll be giving that. I'm going to put a quick photograph up here. Just so that people can visualize the project we're talking about as Kay's speaking.
Kay?
Thanks for this opportunity. I guess I'm the designated driver tonight, so. One of the things we want to talk about is some of the progress that we've made since the last time we updated the council. This is a Keppel improvement project, so it's going to go hand in hand with what you just heard about stormwater. That's, that's a very big issue. And that is one of the major decisions that we have, that we've made as far as this project. We are going to utilize some of the existing stormwater and we're also going to provide new stormwater detention for treatment on the system. Couple of other major decisions that have been made is we've, we've gone ahead and we've tentatively set up which, what kind of piers we want to use. We had different types of selections that we could use. And the different types of piers would determine how far apart you can set your piers on the bridges. And the, the longer you can set them, the less expensive it gets because the more often you put piers, it costs more money to put the piers and then the pier caps and the things as those go on. So the type that we've decided on has minimized that and able to stretch those out a little bit further. And one of the other things that we've done is tried to reduce the length of the bridge. If you look at, we originally had a, we call the bridge abutments on both ends of the bridge. I can kind of show you, bridge abutments over here and on the other end. Both of those are needed to hold, hold those portions of the bridge up. But if we can move those in a little closer, the length of the bridge decreases and the less bridge we have to work with, the less expensive it gets. And those are some decisions that we've made. And one last decision, I wanted to make sure that the council's aware of, we have gone ahead and set aside some pedestrian corridors. Those pedestrian corridors are now set. If you want to look at the way we've tried to put those into the development so that we can make it fit onto the bridge. You can't see it on this one. Probably in future, when you'll be able to get a chance to see that. Some of them are coming up here off that and then over on this other side, they'll be coming up underneath. Upcoming, I want to let you know what was coming in July. We're meeting with the Corps of Engineers. We're going to be talking about a permit that we need to get to start this project. And we're actually ahead of time, ahead of schedule. And that's really exciting to be ahead and be ahead of the game. We're looking at the environmental permitting to try and make sure that we hit, hit that and get it in place before we need to start construction.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Can I ask a question about the piers? So most of the valley is a luveal fan, right? So it's the same type of soils as we have, generally speaking, over by the pedestrian over crossing at exit 15, right?
Right, right.
So we had challenges at exit 15 putting down piers as a result of where we sampled and where the piers actually wound up. How are we avoiding having those same problems when we go to put the piers in for this project?
One of the things, we're doing some geotechnical testing. We're doing some borings and trying to find some, and we're trying to put those borings as close to the piers as we, as we can find them so that we're not surprised when we get there. Last thing we want to see is a surprise when we get into putting a pier in. We've had situations where we go to put a pier and you find what I call boiling sand. You can't, you can't find the bottom to it, it just goes. We want to make sure that we don't put any piers in something like that, but that we do find where those areas of stability are. And as a result, we're, Sheldon can tell you, but we are putting additional geotechnical borings into the mix.
I'd be a little bit more direct on that. The piers at the overcrossing were drilled large diameter caissons, which have challenges in their constructability. In this project, what we're doing is we're using driven piles. So we don't, the excavation won't be collapsing or any of that, which is where a lot of the problems arose. Kay did mention we've done a substantial amount of borings along the alignment for the structure. And it's rather uniform, bearing soils at depth, at consistent depth and so forth. So we're just refining the type of steel pipe pile that is going to be driven.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
You know, we just heard a presentation on stormwater. And so can you touch on, you know, runoff from the roadway here that's going to be crossing a sensitive area?
Yeah, I can. Brian might be a better one to talk. It's his group who's doing the design and the work towards putting that together. So I'll let Brian talk a little bit about that.
I might need you to point for me, Kay. So from a stormwater standpoint, we kind of break the project down into two halves, the west, west side and the east side, basically with the, the bridge over Secqua Creek in the center. So starting on the west side, the option that we're looking at is to try to utilize existing stormwater facilities, which is the Pickering Pond over by the case pointing to, to the west of Lake Drive. So that provides both, as Dana was describing, you know, there's treatment and detention components. We're trying to utilize that pond as much as possible, working with the PPOA regarding that. And on the east side, basically, these will be brand-new facilities and likely due to the terrain and right-of-way constraints, probably underground vaults for both treatment and detention.
What about any sort of runoff from the causeway itself that mixes with motor oil?
That'll all be contained in a collection system. Tola talked about catch basins and Dana did a little bit too. So it'll be a system of catch basins and pipe for a collection and conveyance. It'll go to treatment facilities on the east side, a treatment vault, and then a detention vault on the west side. Right now, we're looking at a treatment vault and/or combined with some treatment capabilities in the Pickering Pond. And then the volume, the volume of the pond actually may allow us to send some of our stormwater there as well for detention.
If I'm going to follow up, is there any monitoring that will go on with respect to the creek or the sensitive areas to ensure that everything's being appropriately caught and not?
I don't know, post, post-construction, that is something that we haven't talked about. I'm not sure if that's something the city would usually does or not. But during, during construction.
During, during the construction, it's monitored.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking about just once it's operational and there's vehicles crossing and it's a sensitive area. You know, just ensuring that there's no adverse impacts on the creek.
Right, one of the things is when, with the treatment facilities that go in, whether it's a vault or a pond, a lot of that is your, your operations and maintenance program and the systems that you have in place to monitor and, and maintain on a regular basis. And I don't know, Sheldon could probably talk about ops better than I can.
The treatment facilities, after it's been collected and moved over to the detention and treatment facilities, as Dana mentioned in hers, these are going to be regulated under the MPDS permit. We're going to have to monitor those annually to make sure that they're functioning properly and maintained properly. So yes, we will be monitoring the storm system.
Yeah, I wasn't as worried about the actual detention pond or the piping system. It was more just the creek itself.
That would probably be under the ambient monitoring program that Dana was speaking to. There's monitoring points within the stream that we monitor.
Okay, and the last two points I wanted to make, we intend to have the 60% plans and specifications ready by the end of 2015. Sheldon and his group have been very diligent in making sure that, that the timeline moves forward, that the schedules move. And we're actually a little bit ahead and we are well within the budget and we're on track with that. That's all good news, I think, so, open to questions now.
Clarification about the pedestrian walkways? You talked about linkages, but there is going to be sidewalk?
There is going to be sidewalk on the north side.
Right, okay.
Across the bridge, there will be sidewalks on the other sides also.
Sorry?
There will, just on the north side of the bridge, there will be a sidewalk and there will also be sidewalks in the other directions where they match up with existing streets.
Okay. I just question about the overall funding for the project? And what is, what is our current, you know, what is the estimate? And how much of that funding have we already, is identified and secured?
The Costco Development Agreement identified the cost of this project at approximately $40 million. Costco was paying for 48%. And we have, let's see.
Nine, seven.
We've got about $13 million in grants so far against the city's share. And then that portion, these are tied together with some other projects in the MTFA, the Development Agreement. And key to this is the East Lake Mamish Parkway project because we've, the grants that we've gotten on that project have exceeded the city's share. So Costco will be taking some of their money from the East Lake Sam project and adding it to their responsibility on the 62nd project. So it's looking like somewhere in the neighborhood of about $3.5, $4 million or so is remaining to be funded, which we've identified funding sources for from impact fees that we've collected already from development agreements and some other funds that the city normally collects.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's exactly what I was wondering, thank you. All right, any other questions or?
That's, that's the presentation. If there's any questions, you're welcome to ask now or ask later too. Sheldon has our phone numbers.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we're good, thank you very much, thanks.
So move on to the last portion of the meeting, as is customary, just like we do in our regular council meeting. If there's any kind of committee or regional committee reports you'd like to share? So it's just like, just like always. And Nina, as always, we start with you.
I always have something to say, don't I? Well, one thing I want to say is about you. I learned that you'll be joining me with the KCD, the King Conservation District Review of Applications. Is that true? Yes, that'll be fun. So they're rolling out, distributing their newfound funding in both pollinators.
You know, I think I sent in, I was interested and I haven't heard anything.
You are, you're in, we're going to talk after the meeting. And so the ones that you and I will be working on regard sustainable regional food systems and shoreline and repairing habitat, both of which very important to our city. I think that'll be great. I want to comment on Cascade Water Alliance.
I want to comment on Cascade Water Alliance, where I serve as an alternate to the mayor on the board, and I serve on the Resource Management Committee. One thing that's been top of mind with people is water supply for drinking water. And I want to remind my council members and anybody else who's listening that those communities that are served by Cascade Water Alliance, such as Isaguas Highlands and Talis, right? Isaguas Highlands for sure. We have been assured countless times, no, maybe I could count them, that we have plenty of water for drinking water and distribution, and we depend on the city of Seattle's water supply. And they started banking rainwater back in the fall of 2014. They're not dependent on snowpack, as we hear in the news daily about the need for water for agricultural uses in eastern Washington. So I just wanted to remind you that we seem to be in good stead for drinking water, according to my sources at the Cascade Water Alliance. And then I also want to share with you that they're doing a campaign this summer called "We Need Water Because," which is an interactive public relations campaign, and it's going to be rolled out to each of the member cities. So you will see an actual facility being installed in Isaguas, don't know where, and I'm not sure when, that will help educate our community about the importance of water and things that everyday people can do to save water and impact our water sources. And the IHCA, I'm just going to point out, the Isaguas Highlands Community Association re-replaced significant numbers of irrigation hoses and the sprayers that reduced their water use by a great deal, and that was financially supported by our being in the Cascade Water Alliance. And then last but not least, I wanted to give you an update on the Chamber of Commerce. I am the liaison for that, and I attend their monthly board meetings. And I have offered to attend their Government Affairs Committee meetings, but they didn't have one this last month, so I'm hoping they invite me whenever they have matters of the city to discuss. I'm sure they have other jurisdictions that they concern themselves with at their meetings, so it wouldn't necessarily be a meeting. But I got a little report from their new executive director, and her name is Kathy, with a K, N, a Y, Kathy McCory. And she started on June 8th and seems to be up and running at a very quick adoption rate there. So she's, she's working very hard at the office. She has a, a lot of the activities that they've been working on are all keeping up with their schedule. There doesn't seem to be any slow in pace. But she made a note here that I want to share with you, that they're still looking for Fourth of July parade and event volunteers, and that's right around the corner. I bet that would be a lot of fun to volunteer for the Fourth of July celebration here in Isaguas. And then she also made a mention that there has been a great increase in relocation requests. I thought that'd be interesting to you. This talks about recruiting employees or businesses from outside areas, and they are an, we talked about, when we talked about comp plan and what sort of services we provide to the business community, I think it's interesting to point out that this is one of the things that they do. And so they're bringing back the relocation package service offering that they do for people who are recruiting employees from out of town or businesses that are being recruited from outside the Isaguas area. And that's what I brought. Thank you.
Thank you. Tola?
Thank you. The King County Regional Law and Social Justice Committee will meet this Thursday morning at 7:30, as usual, in the Bertha Kay Landis Room in Seattle City Hall. The agenda has not yet been delivered on that, so it'll be a surprise. Thank you.
Josh, anything? Report. Thanks.
Thank you. I will be brief. This is regarding east side fire and rescue. The, I wanted to give a, just sort of brief update on where we are with the search for the consultant, the choosing of the consultant for the search for the new fire chief. And council member Polly serves on the committee that's been working on that process. And the board expects to have a recommendation for a search consultant at its July board meeting, which I believe is July 9th. And the process is on track for a candidate selection by late fall or early January. And then I also wanted to report that the East Side Fire and Rescue Board's Finance Committee, that was regularly scheduled last week, has been rescheduled to this coming Monday, June 29th, at 4:00 PM. We had low attendance at that meeting, which normally wouldn't be a huge problem, except that this is their first look at the proposed 2016 budget. So I decided to reschedule it so that we could have more, more eyes on it. And again, it's a 4:00 PM Monday, June 29th, at East Side Fire and Rescue Headquarters on Newport Way. That's my report.
All right, thank you. Both of my regional committees are in recess for the summer, so I don't have anything to report until September. So anything, I guess we're done.
Yeah.
Unless somebody has to make a speech. Okay, we're good. We are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Emily, for you and your staff supporting us tonight. Bob, you did a great job with the lights. You're hired. Just figure out that sunshine issue, and we'll be all good. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.